I'd like to call the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance. I apologize for running in a little bit late, but we should have a good meeting and appreciate everyone being here. We will begin our meeting with the invocation by the Reverend Pastor Steve Smith at Sunrise at Pembroke Matter Christian Church. Everyone would stand for the invocation, and after the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor. Would you bow your heads as I pray? Heavenly Father, first of all, thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here today. As we prepare to celebrate Thanksgiving this week, let us all pause to consider your love and your kindness. You are full of mercy and grace, and we thank you for that. We thank you for life itself. Thank you for our great city and those you have placed in leadership here. Thank you for the freedoms we have, even the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. We thank you for the men and women who served to secure our freedom. In the Bible, we're told that as citizens, we ought to obey the governing authorities, since you, God, have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, Mr. Sessoms. I pray for each of our councilmen and women, and for the various levels of city officials and leaders assembled here today. Specifically, God, I ask you to graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of love and concern for the well-being and true needs of our citizens and guests, a thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence to seek your face and your will in their decision-making, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and their families. And, God, I pray that you will allow them to find amazing joy and fulfillment as they serve you in our city. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please guide and direct them in the path that you will please, will please you and will benefit those who live in and are guests to our beloved city of Virginia Beach. Thank you, God, for loving us. It's in your most precious name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Steve, thank you for coming down. It's nice to see you again, sir. We have the roll call. Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, with Mr. Earn absent, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to reset.
And Mr. Earn is on family holiday vacation. Do you have a motion for approval of the minutes of November 7th, 2017?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
I understand we have some Boy Scouts here. If they could come forward, I'd like to give them a city seal. If y'all could come forward, please, just for a moment. I believe these guys are your neighbors.
This is, um...
Come on.
From...
What happened?
Isn't that all?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Glad to have you here.
From the Lynn Haven district.
From the Lynn Haven. This is Wood's very proud of you all. Where's that, Jim?
Right here.
Wahoo in the midst.
Thank you.
Has someone's going to the game on Friday? That's right. Friday night. Forty yards. I'm excited.
Thank you.
Not that game tonight.
I just want to thank the Boy Scouts for coming, and we appreciate all that you're doing to become great leaders in the future. I also want to thank the leaders of the Boy Scouts, because I know it's a sacrifice to take the time, but you're making a huge difference in these young people's lives. Thank you. I would like to read how we will handle speakers. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. And please understand that we do hold to that, and we do that not to be mean, but to be fair. I will now open a public hearing on the acquisition by agreement or condemnation Burton Station-Baker Road Drainage Improvement Project.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Wildfire 5G Inc. licensed lease for space to install wireless equipment sees traffic signal pole at the intersection of Newtown and Baker Roads, city-owned fiber optic cable installation to connect it Newtown-Baker Roads and North Hampton Boulevard-Diamond Springs Roads.
No speaker, Your Honor.
Item number three, I'm going to put, combined with the ordinance that goes with it. Okay, I will now ask the Vice Mayor to go to the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like the move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions. Item I-1, which is a resolution naming the Virginia Beach Convention Center Ballroom, the James B. Ricketts Ballroom. Item II, ordinance to amend City Code Paragraph 17-3 pertaining to the Public Library Board terms and limitations. Item III, ordinance to authorize acquisition of temporary construction and permanent drainage easements for the Burton Station-Baker Road Drainage Improvement Project by agreement or condemnation. Item IV, ordinances to execute an agreement with lease with Wildfire 5G Inc., A, use of city-owned traffic signal pole to install wireless equipment at the intersection of Newtown and Baker Roads, and B, lease bundles of city-owned dark fiber optic cable at the intersection of Newtown-Baker Roads and North Hampton Boulevard and Diamond Springs Road. And, Madam Clerk, please note that Mr. Davenport is abstaining on item 4B.
Yes, Your Honor.
Item fi... No, excuse me.
It's A and B.
A and B.
We're going to do...
A and B?
Correct.
He's abstaining on A and B.
And we're doing 5B on the agenda.
Five, okay. And item five, ordinance to accept and appropriate, item 5B, which is $46,068 to the Fire Department of the Hazmat Team.
Open a public hearing on planning.
Under planning for consent, item J-2, which is the courthouse charity, Princess Anne Masonic Lodge, et cetera, for a condition used per minute reassembly use at 2849 Princess Anne Road in the Princess Anne District. Item III, the application of Cavalier Golf and Yacht Club for closure of public right-of-way known as Cardinal Road in the Lynn Haven District. Madam Clerk, please note that Mayor Sessoms and Mr. Davenport are abstaining on that item.
Yes, Your Honor.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero on the items read by consent, noting the abstention of Mr. Davenport on J-4, A and B, and K-3, and the mayor's abstention on K-3, you have adopted the consent agenda.
We'll now hear the public hearing on the amendment to the fiscal year 2017/18 capital budget for Central Resort District Drainage Improvements, tied to ordinance to accept and appropriate $5,292,784 from FEMA to the Central Resort District Drainage Improvement Project. Please call the speakers.
Jesse Wasserberg.
Could you repeat it?
Jesse Wasserberg.
One more time?
Jesse Wasserberg.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. You got my help right here with me today.
A very fine one, I might add.
I just thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting me come and talk to you. I just want to inform you guys that you have a perception problem, and you might have already known it, being in this job for a while, most of you. But the perception is that most of you are supported by developers. You can go on the website and see where most of your campaign finance comes from, and it comes from different real estate agents and different developers from around the city. And then, when you go and vote for more development or things that help developers, it just, it looks bad. And the real problem is, is you keep reinforcing that perception. And, you know, I can appreciate that the roads flooded down at the beach, you know, back in 2013, seems like a while ago now. I don't know how many homes or businesses were actually flooded. I haven't heard any of that information yet. But it's just, it's very interesting that now we're going to put more money down at the beach, and that apparently this wasn't that important at the time of the budget hearing, because it wasn't in the budget. So, but now, all of a sudden, this money is important for the beach, and there's not another area where this money is more deserved. Now, I'm not saying my neighborhood is more deserved, or any other particular neighborhood is more deserving of the money, but it just, it's, just seems interesting that all of a sudden, the beach that flooded, you know, years ago is more deserved of this, when there's neighborhoods that have been flooding for 20 or 30 years that, you know, have not gotten that much money. So I just urge you guys to just, just look at where you're actually putting the money, and does it really make sense to go there? Is that really the priority, number one? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight.
Hi. We're tag teaming, I guess, tonight. This is my son, Joseph.
Hello, Joseph.
I just wanted to come here tonight, and I did watch the workshop before that you guys just had, and speaking to what Ms. Henley spoke about, about not putting money toward one neighborhood due to one storm, I would just like to urge you to remember that this money did come from the federal government for one storm. So, with that said, you know, the idea is it was for reimbursement, I believe, if I'm correct, for money that was used for Hurricane Matthew and cleaning up debris, is what I was told by Mr. Leahy, is that most of the money came for cleaning up debris during Hurricane Matthew. And just as a victim of Hurricane Matthew who had debris in front of her house, I would like to see that money go right back where it came from, and I don't think that that's a bad idea, because I just spent a day up on Capitol Hill last week, and I listened to many members speak about the impact of flooding, climate change, and sea level rise on our nation, and how we need to prepare for that, and we need to be adapting ourselves, and we need to be changing the money, we need to be changing the money we're spending, that we're already spending. We need to change the way we're going to spend that money to prepare ourselves for not the if when flooding will occur again, or the if of when debris might come again, but the when, because it is going to happen again. The science is there. It proves it. You can, I urge you to, to learn more about it. I've been learning a lot about it this year, and it will happen again in Virginia Beach. And unfortunately, it will happen again in Windsor Woods. It will happen again in Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes, and it'll happen all over this city. And it will happen again at the Central Resort District. And it's very important to make sure that you're taking that money and you're putting it toward this idea of, of protecting this precious coast that we all live, work, and play on. And that's a, that's a big decision for all of you, and I haven't really heard a lot of talks from all of you about this $5.3 million, and I think that maybe you should take it back and have a few more talks on it, on what you should do.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Heidi Jeffries.
We welcome you tonight.
Hi, everybody. I considered not speaking tonight. I considered the fact that due to my lack of competence in City Council, I no longer own property in the city of Virginia Beach, and would in fact try to dissuade anyone who was considering buying property in this city. I considered the fact that it's two days from Thanksgiving, and this public hearing is probably perfunctory, set at a time when the least amount of resistance is likely. I considered the fact that speaking at a City Council public hearing is likely to raise my blood pressure and is probably harmful to my health. Then I considered the people whose voices cannot be heard, for whatever reason. I considered the folks in the middle-class areas of Virginia Beach who feel like me that it's a waste of time to come before the City Council and probably wouldn't speak their opinions. I considered the hard work of others in the community opposed to transferring these FEMA reimbursement funds, and how they never give up, even when city leaders mislead and contradict. So I considered all those things, and then what I considered saying to you, members of City Council, is really, are you really serious that you are going to transfer these funds from the general fund to the Resort District Drainage Project? What an insult to the folks who have sustained so much damage from Hurricane Matthew, whose houses were damaged and are still not whole. What a travesty. That's what I considered saying. And then I considered saying a few other things, but I thought better of it. Please, City Council members, please, don't transfer this money. Use it for Hurricane Matthew damage in Windsor Woods, the lakes, Princess Anne Plaza. Get these people whole, whose pods are still in the front yard, who still don't have curtains on their windows, and you can see them still working. It's a year later, for crying out loud.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thomas Keen. Thomas Keen. Diana Howard.
Diane, we welcome you.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing tonight? Well, this is what we know. We know 1,400 homes were destroyed during Hurricane Matthew, and you approved a 15-year funding plan for repairing that, for the stormwater management, instead of a six-year plan. And you did that because you had other priorities that you didn't want to ruin your bond rating for, so that you can fund those. Things like the dome site, the fieldhouse, the arena, the parking garage, renovating this building or building another one. So you wanted to make sure you can move forward with that and not, not to jeopardize it. So, this money is new money, coming back to us as reimbursement. You don't have to, you know, get a bond or anything for it, or anything like that. And what we know is that Windsor Woods, the lakes, and Princess Anne Plaza were all the hardest-hit places. The lakes, Teresa's home, had crushed pipes, crushed. Now, have all the other pipes in her neighborhood been checked? I don't know. I asked Phil Davenport to give her a call and ask her, and I talked to her today, and she said, nope, he hadn't yet. The Windsor Woods, those pipes there are too small for the area, right? So are those going to be replaced? Can you start doing that now? How about the canals and the drains? I mean, the, you know, the ditches and stuff like that. Have they all been dredged? Can we not do that now? I mean, I don't understand. When we asked, we're not doing the arena now, and when we asked the manager for stormwater engineer if the arena, building the arena, would flood the area, and he said, yes, it would. So we have $18.5 million that we were going to use for off-site for the arena? Can we not use that to mitigate that? I know you all asked, well, the city did, asked Secretary of Transportation for money to put a pond over by the visitor's center, and I see that's one of the alternatives there. Of course, he was opposed to that. But maybe you could use that money that was going to go to the arena for doing that infrastructure to do that area, and then use this money where it's supposed to go to the people that were the hardest hit. Because I really can't believe you're going to stand here and look at them and say, the oceanfront is more important than them. The oceanfront has pumps. Oceanfront has lots of pumps. Now, you're saying that it wasn't on there, the Central Resort District? It was on there last year. It was in last year's packet, and they're, and they got $300,000, right? So here's this...
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you.
Just saying.
Got it.
Same thing.
Thanks for coming down. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I was listening to the prayer this evening, and we were being blessed this evening, and we were encouraged to act with love and compassion towards our neighbors. And while my house was an island on a hill surrounded by water during Hurricane Matthew, I went down into Windsor Woods the week after, and I couldn't believe, it looked like Beirut. But moreover, and Jessica was there with us as we walked through everyone's homes, if you had been down there, you wouldn't be doing this. It was incredible. Everyone's belongings were piled up out in front of their home. People were stealing their stuff, but they needed the insurance companies to come and see it first so they could get a check for it. The woman I was helping, her husband was a pilot. He was deployed, they had three children, and they had no shoes. So that afternoon, we went down and bought them some shoes for her kids. It was really bad, and the optics of what you're doing here isn't acting from love and compassion.
Tom Keen.
So, Mr. City Manager and the rest of you, think about this reimbursement money, and think about the people and what they suffered. There were things we didn't have money for that they needed. I was there, I was helping them. You know, maybe we should set this money aside for the next time we have flooding in Virginia Beach, and think about providing road, road, help, assistance to people whose cars are flooded and had to be towed, and then they need rides to get to work. We don't have any special funding for that. These people were unprepared for what happened to their lives, and it was devastating, Mr. Wood. But there really wasn't anybody to help them. So maybe instead of spending the money on yet another oceanfront project, which, by the way, should be paid by with the Tourism Investment Program funds, because it's an oceanfront project, maybe we should think about the optics of helping people, set the money aside, because we're going to get flooded again, and go down and provide some more assistance and security for those families. And just as Diana told you, there are people whose homes are not yet whole a year later, and you want to take this reimbursement money from Matthew and spend it for some engineering studies on a $113 million oceanfront project? You guys want to get reelected, do the right thing, and think about coming back out and saying, yeah, we do actually care about the people who live here. So I'm just encouraging you to rethink the decision tonight, and if you need to budget the money to do that project, do it through the normal budget process, Mr. City Manager. So with that, I would like to just encourage you to act with love and compassion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. We welcome you, sir.
Pardon, sir?
We welcome you.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen of Council and Deputy Mayor, Vice Mayor, how you doing? And Mr. Sessoms? Okay. Basically, I live in Cape Story by the sea, and we've had an ancient problem there. We had a pump system put in back around '76 or something like that. Built my garage in '75, so it was put in about the time I got it finished, they were started filling in, building the park. The park is a center, Cape Story Park, is the center of that drainage system. Now, it was redone or, you know, worked on in '03. I was present then, and I, you know, assisted the engineer in showing where a lot of the things were. I was there from the time it started and up. We have a little bit of a problem there, because I think our pump is worn out, or something. It's failed twice in the last two storms, and it doesn't make any sense, because for 30 years, I was off making my career as a geophysicist and geologist, and that place was fine, no matter which storm went through. All at once, within less than a 10-year span, I have two floods in my house. Fortunately, it's only five feet where I'm at. I know the reality of it. I study this stuff. I work with this stuff. I've done stuff all over the country and all over the world, and, you know, it doesn't make any sense for a pump to fail twice. Then if you get flooded where there's nothing you can do about the bay, we've got the bay in front of us, and we've got Long Creek on the other, other side. We are actually a barrier island, all the way to the bridge, the Lynn Haven Bridge. The salt water in the Lynn Haven Bridge, when I was studying it for the local district Fort Norfolk, okay, is the same as the North Sea, all right? So we got pure ocean water that flows in and out of Lynn Haven all the time. So what happens to us is we get hit from both sides. Not only that, the recent event with the one, Matthew, was, had a lot of problems with it. Somebody was running a water storage test, well, all summer and into the fall, when we had the heavy rainstorms. The area became so saturated, you can check the records, because everybody had to come out there and cut the trees that had fallen on the bicycle trail, including during the Matthew storm, right next to the back door of my house, I stood there with my camera.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Next speaker, please.
Ken Cord.
Once again, the money had been appropriated for one project that will get taken and used for a completely different project. The $5.2 million question tonight was received from FEMA to be used for, on improving the drainage system in neighborhoods, namely Windsor Woods. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen now. Instead, y'all want to take FEMA's $5.2 million and upgrade the oceanfront drainage system. I have a major problem with that. FEMA didn't give the city this money to be spent on the Resort District, AKA the oceanfront. Again, it was meant for the neighborhoods affected from Hurricane Matthew, like Windsor Woods. So what you guys have in front of you is Title 18.2 Crimes and Offenses Generally, Chapter 6, Crimes Involving Fraud, and that's Virginia Code. In 18.2-178, obtaining money or signatures, et cetera, by false pretense, because that's what this is. If any person obtained by false pretense or token by any person with intent to defraud money, a gift certificate, or other property that may be subject to larceny, shall be deemed guilty of larceny thereof, or if he obtained by any false pretense or token such intents, the signature of any person to a writing, the false making thereof would be forgery, he shall be class, or guilty of a Class IV felony. And you're looking away. Interesting. I know you're set on passing this ordinance/resolution. This is what y'all do. The money's collected, obtained for one specific person, then purpose, then repurposed it for an entirely different project. I have Barbara Henley on video, and I plastered that on YouTube, admitting it. Hanson, I distinctly remember you whining about how, oh, I don't understand why, why we're, you know, spending this money on these neighborhoods, yet you're going to take this money and spend it on the oceanfront. I don't get that. So I just, it boggles the mind. You guys spend this money, don't give a crap what, you know, strings are attached, as in, don't spend this anywhere else, because this is meant for this. Oh, no, we're going to spend it for something else. Interesting.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, can we get our attorney to comment on being accused of doing something illegal here?
There is nothing illegal with this ordinance that's before you. This money is reimbursement for money that you've already spent in these neighborhoods, and Council has the discretion to determine to what project or to the general fund generally that it wants to put it.
Thank you, Moore. Next speaker, please.
Teri.
Next speaker, please.
Teresa Langel.
We welcome you tonight.
Hi, thank you very much, and I wish you all happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
My name is Teresa Langel. I am a resident of the lakes, and we've lived there about 30 years. We've only been flooded once in 30 years. When they came in, after a lot of protesting on my part, and kind of talking to Davenport, I just wanted to say that when they dug up, they put this eye down through the pipe and realized they couldn't see past 25 feet. So when they dug it up, they found a completely crushed drainage pipe. That means I had no protection whatsoever when this flood came through. What I could figure out from what he told me, it was the material that was built out of. Now, I'm not an engineer or anything, but I kind of thought, well, if my drain has been there that long since the development was built, then the other drains in the area are probably, stand a really good chance of not being functional. The lakes was flooded in places that you never thought of it. The water went across the street and into the homes. It had no place to go, and I personally think that this is it. So when you're spending this money that's coming in, and I think it looks like with this, that you allotted $2 million in 2018 for the lakes, nothing in 2019, nothing in 2020, nothing in 2021, nothing in 2022, and nothing in '23. Future spending said $26 million. Now, that's five or six years. I would like to see some of this money go towards just going around and spot checking these drains, and making sure they're at least functional, so that we have at least a chance to survive it. As far as anything legal, I don't think you all are doing anything illegal, but the grossest misuse of taxes, tax oppression on people has been within the law. That doesn't mean that it's morally correct. It doesn't mean that when you're making your decisions, that you don't think about the people of Windsor Woods, Princess Anne, and places like that, that were flooded. And like Reed said and others, I still see homes where they are not, you know, we had insurance, but I see homes that they're still under construction, their pods are still sitting outside, or you can look in the windows and you see they have no walls. These homes have children in them, they have to get up every day and go to school. That's not a very good environment. I know that in the lakes, you'll have a lot of low-income people. I still think they matter, and it's very important for them to have their homes restored or where they rent. A lot of these people rent, and they live week to week. So I just would ask that you would use this money that came from FEMA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming down. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
That's all the speakers, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I want to make some comments at some point, since I don't know what I've been accused of.
Right. Okay.
I guess I'll be interested in seeing what's on YouTube, but I think we have, there are a lot of misperceptions and a lot of misinformation, and I think before we need to go forward on this, we need to clarify that information. What is this money coming to the city for? What was the money originally spent? I think we, I know, but I think the public needs to know and understand, and I don't know that, this is not the usual FEMA money that I think people think of as being able to go to individual people. That's another pot of money. I think we really have to put the facts out, so that the facts are out, so everyone does understand, and that we are, I think this is a topic for misinformation, as we saw that video last week. And I think it's very unfortunate if there is misinformation being given to the public, and I think we need to clarify it before we do go forward, because I think then it's going to be impossible to clarify it. So I think we probably should defer this to our next council meeting, and in the two or three weeks between now and then, that we have the opportunity to answer the information. What did the city spend? Where did that money come from? What is this money intended for? Have we ever gotten this kind of money before? What have we done with it in the past? And all of these things that I think need to be clarified, because I think it's unfortunate if people are told something that is not really the facts.
Thank you. I've got Bobby, I heard it's Shannon. I'm gonna defer to Shannon first.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I prepare my remarks for tonight, just so that I didn't forget anything and leave anything out. But I'd like to say that I truly understand that all areas of our city need, require substantial investments to make sure that we mitigate flooding in the future. But this isn't the issue with this proposal, in my opinion. The question should be, what was the purpose of the funding, or where can it be used to have the most impact? This reimbursement money from FEMA was for Hurricane Matthew. And I understand the federal government allows it to be used for other drainage projects to help with future storms, but I really feel this funding should be focused on the areas of our city where Hurricane Matthew's impact was the greatest. There are families in my district which bore the brunt of that storm, and to this day, as you've heard tonight, they haven't been made whole. And I believe that these areas are still the most vulnerable for flooding in the near future, and I appreciate the flooding that my peers and our council have put and already committed toward these neighborhoods. We are fully funded, and I truly appreciate and thank each of you for being there with me to make sure that we did this for our neighborhood. And I voted this year to support that, but I firmly believe that this Hurricane Matthew funding should be used to help the areas of the city most hardest hit by Matthew, and to use it otherwise would be a disservice to our citizens, and I can't support that.
Thank you. Bobby?
You know, thank you. I guess I got a personal bias in this, in a way. For my job, I do home care rehab, I go to people's homes, and after Matthew, I was in people's homes. And it was a helpless feeling, you know, that I had at that time. And a lot of people were saying to me, Bob, what can you do? What is the city gonna do to help us? You know, Shannon said, you know, city is taking steps to do this, but, you know, right now, I think the money should be dedicated, you know, to help remedy some of the impacted areas. And I guess, you know, part of the problem that I have tonight also is a process problem. You know, we just talked about it this evening, and here we are voting on it. And once again, I've objected to these things, you know, for a while. You know, I think, you know, I agree with Mrs. Henley, a deferral might be in order. We're gonna be having a number of public hearings, taking a look at the whole picture of stormwater management. And the point is, wondering if it'd be better to, you know, to discuss this in the context and the whole picture. So, you know, I would like to make a motion that we defer this.
Second.
Okay, I have a substitute motion for deferral, and...
I don't think we had a main...
Oh, there wasn't a motion. Excuse me, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, then. That's the main motion by John Moss.
Well, I do support the deferral. I sympathize both with what they said, but I still believe the question that I asked on October 25th, because you may recall, the city manager sent us a memo, like he often does in our packet, in all fairness to him, saying, this is what I'm considering, let me know if you have any questions. And everybody knows, I always have lots of questions. So I sent him an email with regard to that on October 25th, and said, I need to understand, because the public wants to understand, what was the criteria, what was the methodology, and how did you score the universe of eligible products and derive that the product that you're recommending is the highest and best use? I do agree with the mayor that we have smart people on our staff, but smart people on your staff doesn't excuse you from being accountable for the recommendations you make with empirical analysis that can stand up to objective, public, robust debate. And we have seen no such matrix. No such matrix has been provided. I think, the reason why I say this, is as we move forward, these decisions of allocating money are not going to get any easier.
Could be tougher.
And just as we've adopted a smart scale algorithm for looking at road projects, if we don't develop a like mechanism that we go out and tell them, and could show the people how this is really looking at things on the merit, and everyone may not in the end agree with it, but that's what we've come up with in the state to adjudicate and prevent these favoritism accusations, and you just have to let the math fall where it is and put the money where the best use is. So that gets away from, there's no fraud being done here, and I don't think there's anyone up here with any dishonorable intentions, or all wanting to do the right thing, but we don't have an algorithm or a process that tells us what the right thing is. And so I think before we start spending money, Mr. Mayor, that we really need to have a smart scale-like algorithm, but we're gonna have a lot of people down here every night thinking that somehow we're playing favorites, or we're being driven by our supporters or our campaign contributors, none of which I believe is true, but we can't tell them why. And we need to be able to give people the reasoning for our decision, and we need to be relying upon our staff to give us the algorithm and the reasoning so that we can, the public can trust the judgment we're making is in the best public good.
Mr. Moss, I think what you just said makes some good sense. I would sit back and say to you that I go along with this deferral. I do have a couple of quick comments, though. I mean, I speak as you just said, every one of this council is trying to do the right thing with limited resources. Flooding is an issue for this entire city, wherever you live, and we are doing, we, you know, we've stepped up and put some very serious money in it, as Shannon just said, in the budget, and I foresee that number increasing in time as well. It is a huge, huge priority for this city. I take, I resent individuals speaking, as some spoke to us today, and I speak for myself, and I believe I speak for this entire body. We have got to have more civility, we have got to have, this body is trying to do the right thing. And I believe that for every, all 10 of us in here today, we have one out. But I also want to explain why I was leaning towards supporting what was presented, because you just reiterated, we do have a very bright staff. And to top it off, we have a city manager that used to run the local Army Corps of Engineers in this region. And so I, as I have said numerous times, we're lucky to have the city manager that we do handle in this type of problem, because of his credentials and his knowledge in dealing with it. So I think anyone that, I see how we could go either way on this. I really mean that. I mean, because these projects need to be done. That flooding in front of that dentist office wasn't even hardly a two-hour rain, and that dentist office had vehicles that were destroyed, that dentist office also had total water inside of it, and then the residents, there are a lot of residential people in that area, and let me also say, it is middle income as well. So, I mean, we have this issue across our city, and I do believe to defer this at this time would be wise. I do think to the city manager, I think you've already got something that's in place on how to rate these flooding projects, do you not, or are you in the process of doing it? Why am I thinking that? Something like a smart scale for transportation.
I think we've provided you a list of all the projects, you had another matrix handed to you today. There's not enough money to do a billion, half a billion dollars' worth of stormwater. This is the only flood control project on that list that has had zero dollars put to it. This money was not earmarked for any specific area, it was encouraged by FEMA to be put towards flood control projects. Just because it happens to be in the central resort area, I don't know the villainization of that, of that particular neighborhood, being characterized as a resort project is appropriate. People live there, businesses work there, and they have a right to also have the engineering necessary to move them forward, as do all the others. The gentleman that spoke on behalf of Shore Drive and Cape Henry is certainly justified to be concerned that his neighborhood isn't there. And quite frankly, there's no specific allocation of funds that were given to the cleanup of all the flooded neighborhoods from Hurricane Matthew. These weren't flood dollars that were used to spend this, they were operational dollars that were rerouted to take care of the costs associated with the cleanup. And so I'd be happy to write a paper so that I can answer all the questions here. I don't know that I can give you an algorithm, Mr. Moss. I can tell you that in 2015, when we briefed the city council on the four major areas, one of them being the Central Beach District, one of them being Eastern Shore Drive, one of them being the Southern Watershed, and one of them being the Woods Plaza, Windsor Woods Plaza area, they are all equally as important. And I guess it depends on the pair of shoes you work, that you wear, and the house that was flooded, and the concerns that you have. And certainly, we all feel that pain in each of those neighborhoods. And I can't for, I can't justify, I can do the math, the dollars, and we showed you that again tonight, what the Dewberry Study tells you, the damage predictions and percentages of damages associated with those neighbors, but is there a difference between 12% and 18% if you're the house that's being flooded? And so all I'm trying to do is equally distribute what available money, and this is found money, this is a reroute of 2017 appropriated dollars now coming back to us in 2018. And so can I give you a foolproof guaranteed matrix algorithm that would pass muster? No, it won't pass muster if you're representing the Rose Hall District, or the Kempsville District, or the Beach District, or the Lynnhaven District. It won't pass muster, and there's no matrix that I can give you, short of saying, let's create another $250 million to fix it all, but it's still going to take a sequential, bifazing effort to get this worked on.
Very good. Mr. Moss, then we'll call for the question.
Go ahead, Barbie, I'll yield you. Well, I just want to make one comment, because it really bothers me that there's the perception that we may use this money to give to the individuals who were damaged, and that I don't believe is something that we can do with this money. And I don't, I hate to have these folks have their hopes raised that they're going to get some money from the city to fix their homes and so forth, because I don't believe that's something that we can do. And I think it's important that we make everyone aware of all of the facts, and I do hope that we will have a major of public information. Well, of course, we're gonna be doing public information when we do this series of meetings that we're gonna be having in the next two months. But I think it's really important that, you know, we make sure everyone understands, because I would hate for people to think that we have money that we could be giving to individuals, and we just won't do it, because that's just not the case.
John, then we'll call for the question.
I empathize with the city manager's challenge, because I think it's our challenge. I think it's the same challenge the state had with highway money. That algorithm is not perfect. It will never be perfect. It does rely upon the people who look at the information that's generated that, that's probably 80% right, for the public to somewhat presume and trust that the people who are then applying it are virtuous in their judgment. Our whole civic ethic is about people being virtuous in public service. So I don't, I'm not looking for perfection, but what I'm looking at is, what's this, I think, and I think we ought to look at some of those smart scale criteria rather than reinventing the wheel, and I'm pledged to work on that myself over the Christmas holidays and prepare some kind of paper. I love these kind of challenges. I do evaluation assessments for a living, so I'll take a stab at it. But I really do believe that we collectively want something that won't be perfect, and I won't say sometimes that there won't be other things that drive it, but if you don't know where the baseline is, you don't know your reasoning for your departure, and you then can't be accountable. And I think all of us just want to do the right thing, but be accountable for the right thing. And I really wish, and I have a lot of my good friends out there who I eat pizza with, all-around pizza know well, but on this issue, I know there are other issues where I would be on your side, but on this issue, people up here are really trying to do the right thing with a little bit of money. And if we want to do more, I need you to come up here and tell me how we can help us raise it, and I have some ideas on that, too, but it's gonna take a lot more money to be a lot more aggressive on some of this issue, because that's all we are gonna be faster in some ways. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Counsel, we have a motion to defer. I've asked Mr. Dyer, he's gonna suggest 60 days, which will allow the public comments, public meetings to have occurred. So the motion to defer for 60 days, call for the question, please.
The vote is 10 to 0 with Mr. Irvin being absent.
I know, open the public hearing for Planning Water Boxes LLC, conditional change of zoning from B2 and R 7.5 to condition B4 and P1, conditional use permit regarding multifamily dwelling and commercial marina at 2100 Marina Shore Drive. Call the speakers, please.
First speaker is Lisa Murphy.
And Lisa, you will have up to 10 minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm a local attorney with an office at 999 Waterside Drive in the City of Norfolk. I represent the applicant Water Boxes LLC and the developer, Waitsor MS LLC, in connection with the proposed rezoning and conditional use permits. We'd like to, to thank Carolyn Smith and staff for all of their work on the many facets of this project, which, as you know, is a major redevelopment project. The proposal that you have before you tonight is the result of extensive outreach and collaboration between the owner of the property, the developer, and the community. I've been involved for two years now, and I've been involved in 17 meetings and presentations to various civic leagues, many of them multiple times. Brad Waitsor and the property owner have been involved in 30-some meetings. So we really have taken the time to take this piece of property, which is really a jewel in the corridor, and make it something that can be a positive thing for all of the community. As the staff report indicates, the applicant is seeking to conditionally rezone two parcels of land that total together 18.4, just about acres. And you can see now there are two separate parcels. The one where the, the marina and the dry boat storage and the 30,000 square feet of commercial and office space is located. And then the other piece here, which is technically zoned R 7.5, is the piece that we would be looking to zone P1 preservation. The, and all of this would be so that we could take the redevelopment parcels, so to speak, and put on that 200 multifamily units in a real mixed-use residential marina community development. The dry storage facility, the fuel facility, which is three 10,000-gallon fuel tanks, and existing commercial retail and event restaurant space would go away. The important thing for most, most folks is what's going to stay. And you can't see it on here, but the surf rider will stay, the existing marina boat slips will stay, the surf rider, the pool next to surf rider that's for the marina, that will stay. Everything else on the, the development parcel currently will go away, including the fuel dock and the fuel, fuel space here and the fuel tanks. In the place of the dry storage facility, you'll have one of two multifamily buildings. They'll be four, four stories high, two buildings. And you can see what we've done since the original application, we've actually reduced the density by 25%. So we started out with 261 units, we're down to 200 units, really in response to some of the feedback that we were hearing. If you go back, I'm sorry, Carolyn, would you go back to the slide that showed the site plan? Yep, there's the surf rider. Very important to folks that that was staying. Okay, go one up. It shows the footprint. So by reducing the number of units, we were able to do two things: reduce the footprint, so you've got smaller buildings, but we were also able to come up with a shape so that none of the surrounding properties is looking at a flat, long surface. You've got some architectural relief and fenestration, and that, we were also able, in reducing the size, to, to really come 85 to 90 feet away from the property line with Long Creek Cove, which we feel is really a benefit. If you think about why it took us 30-some meetings in three years, there are a lot of people that are impacted by this. A lot of people live around this, and we've really tried to be responsive to all of those concerns that we've heard. As the staff report indicates, the buildings will have a southern coastal look and feel, which is where Carolyn was going a couple slides ago. And it'll be an attractive complement. There's the, the pool next to surf rider. There'll be an attractive complement to what's there now. There's a proffer that if the surf rider is ever redeveloped, the pool is ever redeveloped, those would have to be designed to match the apartment building that's going in there. In addition to the apartment buildings, where I showed you where the fuel dock is, we're leaving a space for a small 4,500-square-feet indoor/outdoor oyster bar-type restaurant facility. So you'll have the surf rider at one end and another patio indoor/outdoor restaurant at the other. Right there. The, on average, the units and the homes in the, the two buildings will be larger than usual with vastly upgraded finishes to appeal really to downsizing homeowners and retirees who want to stay in the Shore Drive Great Neck Corridor. And we think this is, this type of project will really be attractive to them. The contract purchaser is a high-quality local developer with deep ties to the community whose multifamily projects and apartment management company have won awards and high praise in the industry for quality and excellence. Critically important to most of the neighbors was what was going to happen with the undeveloped parcel. That is the parcel that we're rezoning. There you go, preservation P1. In addition, addition to the P1 designation, the proffers include a restriction on any future development. So we spent a long time on this, but the development ends, or the, the line between the redevelopment parcel and the preservation parcel is the end of the existing pavement. So what is currently undeveloped will remain undeveloped in its natural state. There's also a proffer condition that says that that will be conveyed to a nonprofit entity within 18 months. We hadn't identified anybody, but fortunately, in the last few days, Lynn Haven River Now has come forward and said that they would like to be the recipient of that parcel. And we've got a lady here tonight who is going to speak to that. They're very excited about taking on that, that property. The other thing that we agreed to do with the preservation parcel over here, Wake Forest Street, the folks that live in Cape Story by the Sea and Cape Henry Shores are entering the, the beach area, the marsh area now at the end of Wake Forest Street, and we've agreed to give an easement to those folks so that they can do legally what they're now doing. They can't put any boat launches, they can't store boats or any facilities, no improvements there, but they will be able to use that area. As the staff report indicates pursuant to the city's own analysis, the redevelopment actually generates fewer vehicle trips each weekday than the existing development and any byright uses that could be made of that property. The project overall, as I said, reduces traffic generation. We can't really predict, and I know the city traffic engineer took a stab at what the site plan, what they could build with 200,000 square feet of commercial, which is what they have approved site plan versus what's there now versus what else you could do with a property. Potentially, with a site plan, you'd have three times as much traffic as what would be proposed with this project. The other thing, the other benefit you get is that the traffic coming through Marina Shores Drive is not going to be big fuel tanks and big trucks moving boats anymore. The dry storage and the industrial uses, boat repairs, et cetera, that's going to go away, as will the weddings and other assembly-type events. We also, as a benefit, and I know the folks here talking about flooding, will appreciate that the proposed development actually reduces the impervious area by approximately 30,000 square feet. So the developed parcel is fully paved. And when we redevelop it, we're actually going to have a net benefit by about 30,000 square feet, which is going to decrease stormwater runoff. We're also getting away from, rid of the fuel tanks and all of the environmental conditions that that entails. And as I said, we eliminate the more noxious industrial activities that you wouldn't think would be compatible with residential uses. We think it's a benefit to get rid of the dry storage. It's an antiquated facility. It needs capital improvements. And most of us know that have been here through the, the Lynn Haven Botel fire, it can be a dangerous thing to, to have residential that close to a dry storage facility. The aesthetics of the redevelopment will be much nicer than what's there now, and we feel a real upgrade. And I said we've improved access for Cape Story by the Sea and Cape Henry Shores so that they can keep using the river. The bottom line is, no one likes change, but in this case, change is certain. And if you accept the premises that change will come one way or another due to the fact that the land is currently underutilized, the redevelopment that we're proposing is the only change that requires public hearings, public comment, the three years of collaborative work that we've done to really come up with a project that we think is a win-win for the community. It reduces traffic, increases safety, it improves and protects this valuable estuary, which you'll hear from Lynn Haven River Now, I'm sure. And as the staff report indicate, it is consistent with the comp plan and the vision. Thank you. I'll stand by for any, any questions.
Yeah, Carolyn, can you go to the site plan? There you go. So Ms. Murphy, I added a condition here that I spoke with you about applicant installing a variable width paved path suitable for walking on the western side of Marina Shores Drive. Can you show?
Yeah, it's tough to see.
But explain the premise.
From this, but it would be along here. Carolyn, do you have an, zoomed out aerial, maybe? That would be helpful. So one of the things that we originally proffered, there you go, after talking to the neighbors, was a, a walkway or a path along Marina Shores Drive. So if you see Marina Shores Drive comes in up here and goes around this way. So the walkway would start, there's a detention, a BMP right here. Walkway would start along, there you go, along the western side here. And basically, what it would do is it would give folks walking back to the marina and folks in the apartments walking to other parts of Shore Drive the ability to get off of that road, which was an important safety concern. So we had proffered that. Kay asked us to take it out of the proffers because it was an illegal off-site proffer, but by all means, we're happy to have that added as a condition to the conditional use permit for multifamily because it's something that Brad feels is important. It's, it's really good for everybody.
Thanks.
Another question? John?
I noticed on your disclosure, I'm just, I always check all those things, there's listing for Camden Private Capital Corporation. I found a listing, I didn't know SEC and different places, for Camden Private Capital LLC, but the only corporation was Finance. Is it the legal name Finance Corporation, or am I not finding the right place?
It's more of a local company. So the original disclosures per the city form were for the applicant Water Boxes. And then we disclosed the contract purchaser and the contract purchasers, vendors, et cetera. We also, in an abundance of caution, added a listing for the contract purchasers-related entities, which is very similar to the ones, he was involved in the Burton Station Apartments. So they're all going to be local family entities. I don't, Brad's here, he can address that, but it's not going to be a big.
It's not critical. I was just, I go back and looked up everyone and couldn't find that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Brad Waitsor.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Mayor Sessons, Vice Mayor Jones, and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Brad Waitsor, for the record. My address is 242 Mustang Trail in Virginia Beach, 23452. And I am the developer of the proposed Marina Shores mixed-use development. As I see it, Lisa has described the advantages of this very well, but I see three overriding advantages that I think are really, really important. Due to time constraints, I will not address the issue of how boaters will be affected by removal of the dry storage, except to say that boaters will not be burdened. And if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them, unduly burdened. I can also, not going to spend time addressing the very flawed online petition that's out there, except to say again that I will be happy to answer any questions you have. I've looked at it closely and talked to people who've signed the petition and gotten a lot of insight. To me, the most important thing concerning traffic is, the important thing to remember is that 200 apartments produces exactly the same traffic as 10,500 square feet of restaurant space. So I think it's inevitable that this is going to be redeveloped. The demand is there for restaurant space if this project is not approved. And I think it's safe to say that we will see a series of restaurants. And therefore, you could put easily, without doing any additional work, about 60,000 square feet of restaurant space there. You previously had almost 30,000 square feet of restaurant space there, and it successfully operated for years. No matter how you look at it, any alternative development is going to produce way more traffic, and even the existing condition, somewhat more traffic. To me, the environmental benefits are enormous. And as I look at it, we can talk about preservation area, we can talk about reducing impervious area, we're not subject to flooding there. But to me, the biggest thing is that it eliminates the chance for fuel leaks on the ground, in the river, and in the subsoil and groundwater. As a lifelong boater, I can tell you that no matter what regulations there are, fuel leaks occur in boat fueling facilities. The final thing, I think, to me, is the most important thing, is life safety. In those boats, an estimated 30,000 gallons of gasoline is stored. Most boats are made of fiberglass resin, which is also a petroleum-based product. And the Lynn Haven Botel fire was a three-alarm fire with explosion after explosion for many hours.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next speaker.
You mentioned fuel tanks. Are you, as a part of the development of the site, are you under any kind of, I guess, federally inspected? Are you doing any kind of hazardous soil remediation, moving fuel tanks, having to cook soil and restore it to residential land value condition?
The, the facility, the subsoil around it has been tested several times recently, and it's in very good condition. So we'll just be removing it lawfully, and if there are any problems, we will remediate that, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I, my name is Whitney Graham. I live in Great Neck Point at 1800 Churchside Lane. And I'm here to speak in support of the project. I've, you know, like, there probably are some other people here, love the Great Neck Shore Drive Corridor. And this project, to me, you know, after living there for years and years, there used to be a, a bar there called Kokamoes, generated a ton of traffic. Not sure very many of the people were sober. This is, to me, anyway, this, to me, this is a great project. We, we live in, like I said, live in Great Neck Point. At some point, my wife and I, our kids are going to be grown, they're going to be out of college, and this presents an opportunity for us to stay in this area. These are going to be great apartments. Mr. Waitsor is a boater, as he mentioned. I think these will, I think this marina and the residential will be an asset to the community. So anyway, I just wanted to voice my support for the project.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Karen Forgé.
Karen, we welcome you tonight.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Karen Forgé. I'm the Executive Director of Lynn Haven River Now. And I'm here primarily tonight to answer any questions that you might have about our arrangement with the preservation area. It's 4.6 acres, and it's primarily wetlands. And as I'm sure you're aware, we have lost most of our wetlands in the really highly-developed Shore Drive Corridor of the city, making this area even more valuable, both for the critical ecosystem services that it provides, but also because it provides a flooding buffer for the adjacent neighborhood of Cape Story. So as a 501(c)(3), we are prepared to accept this preservation area, and it's our intention to put a conservation easement on this property that would be filed with the Virginia Outdoor Fund. And I can also second what was said about the water quality benefits of removing the fuel tanks and the fuel service and the boat repair services that take place right adjacent to Long Creek. That will have water quality benefits. So are there any questions? Yes.
Will you be requesting upon receipt of this money, any grants or money from the city for the purposes of maintaining or sustaining that parcel?
It's not our intention. And our intention is to keep it in the, the, you know, the condition that it, the natural condition that it's in, and that's the purpose of the conservation easement. It would just reinforce what's already in the proffer, that it will not ever be developed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Riley Street.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Riley Street. I am a local business owner, and I've been a resident in the Great Neck area for the better part of 25 years. I'm here in support of the rezoning, as it will reduce traffic, create a buffer between the development and the existing houses, and preserve five acres of wetland forever. When I was preparing my thoughts for this evening, I thought of, what if the role was reversed? What if the, the 200 apartments, high-end apartments were already there, and the applicant was requesting to tear those down to build a warehouse and store thousands of gallons of fuel and boats and create more traffic through there? And I doubt that that would go over very well. Not to mention, I do think that it's a added bonus, that it changes the waterfront forever, removes the industrial and commercial use that simply doesn't belong there, probably shouldn't have been permitted in the first place. As a father and a husband, it gives my family areas to go down to, you know, paddleboard, to do and preserve. So again, in closing, I'm just here to support the rezoning in front of you today. To me, this is the most important land use and decision that I've come to see for our community.
Thank you very much for coming.
Heather Dugan.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. My name is Heather Dugan, and I live in Lynn Haven Colony in the Great Neck area. I've been there for almost 23 years, and I'm a small business owner. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the rezoning and conditional use permit for the property at 2100 Marina Shores Drive. I think it'll be a great asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Harry Beila.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name's Harry Beila. I've been a member of the Long Creek Cove condo association for pushing over 18 years, April of 1999, I believe. And I've been on the Board of Directors for all of it, except for maybe the last four months. And so I know the area quite well, and I've knocked on quite a few doors. There's 87 houses in there. And by the way, I'm here in support of Long Creek Cove. On all the doors that I've knocked on, I've asked what anyone's concerned of what it was, and I've knocked on the majority of the homes. And I've talked to the majority of the people. There was safety, traffic, and appearance were the three major things that everybody was looking for. Safety, I haven't seen anything unsafe in our area. There's been some traffic when that gentleman mentioned Kokamose, and you all kind of laughed a little bit. Well, I worked at Kokamose, and on a Friday night, Saturday night, we pumped in over 2,000 people in and out per night. Sunday was close to it. If there was a special event going on, it was in excess of 2,000 to 2,500. Only one road in that condo association really saw the traffic. There's two other roads, they saw none of it. You're going to hear some speakers tonight, one of them lives across the street from me, and that person doesn't even know what's happening, other than knocking on doors and talking to people. Another person you're going to hear from lives around the corner, doesn't live on that street, they're talking to people. They're probably going to be against it, but they're not realizing that the appearance is going to be an effect. It's going to increase, in my, in my vision and the people I've talked to, it's going to increase the value of our homes. The safety, since the last meeting when I stood here, there's been a sidewalk installed, which there was concern about little kids walking to the bus stop. There's been a beautiful sidewalk put in there, landscaping put in there, and now the kids can walk to the bus safe, nice and safe. They need to wear longer shorts and jackets in the 40-degree weather, but other than that. So safety-wise, traffic-wise, I've really, since the last meeting, been watching the traffic. I'm not a traffic cop, I'm not a traffic light, I'm nothing, but I do count. And I'm going to tell you right now, I've never seen two cars or three cars, at the very most, in line trying to get out of that place, to go across the street. The city has turned down quite a few times a light, because they didn't see a justification of traffic to put a light in there. I won't disagree. But the traffic that's going to come from 200 places is going to be a whole lot less than what would be if it was designed to go back to a marina with multiple whatever and a lot of traffic. There is going to be some, in my opinion, going to be some...
Thank you very much for coming down, sir.
Say again?
Thank you very much for coming down, Your Honor.
No problem.
Appreciate you coming.
All right. Any questions?
Next speaker, please.
Michael Bott.
We welcome you tonight, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I got to disagree with Harry on the safety issues and the traffic there. I've lived there since 1997. And I've seen the traffic increase coming over Great Neck Road and from Shore Drive with all the developments that's been there. Intersection of Lynn Haven Drive and Great Neck Road, I pulled statistics, the last three years, there's been 28 accidents at that intersection. I would have liked to have gone back farther, but the city was going to charge me $19 an hour to do that. I think that's a considerable amount of accidents. My concern there is safety. We have school buses coming in and going out twice a day. I'm not really opposed to the look of the apartments. They look nice. But we need a stoplight at that intersection. I'm also not in agreement with the fact that they're going to decrease traffic by those apartments. As I said, I've lived there since 1997. During the summer, when the boats are coming and going and people coming and going, it's not that bad. Wintertime, nothing. You put 200 apartments, that doesn't equal 200 cars. That's at least 400 cars. And that's going to be in and out constant 365 days a year. So that one road of Lynn Haven Drive going out, you can't make a left turn there right now. People coming over that bridge are not going 45 miles an hour, they're coming 60 miles an hour. My wife has been in an accident there, my neighbor two doors down has been in an accident. Al here, who's going to get up to speak, his son has been in an accident there. It's unsafe. If you put a stoplight there, I don't have, you know, I'm not opposed. That's all I got to say. Life safety, gentleman said, life safety was on the top of his list. You come in Lynn Haven Drive and around Marina Shores Drive to these apartments, if there's a fire back there, that is the only road in for your fire department and, you know, EMS. That is the only road. So that's a concern, life safety. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Laura Maxson.
We welcome you tonight.
Can we put that aerial shot back up?
Can we get the aerial shot, please? How's that?
Okay. As you can see, they're building right behind Long Creek Cove where I live. And there's one street in, one street out. And I'd like to contradict some of the things that were said. They reduced the number of units because they couldn't put a road behind my house. Thank you, Army Corps of Engineers. And also, the traffic is going to be increased. I think before you make a decision here, we need to have a traffic count. It is seasonal back there right now, and I don't know if any of you would like to have 200 apartments plop behind your neighborhood. And it's going to increase density, traffic, and safety issues. Everybody has brought up the safety issues, and the reason they have had 30 meetings is because people are opposed to this. I did the online petition, I got 900, well, 792 signatures. And people will say, oh, well, you didn't tell both sides. Well, what's the other side? We have been threatened by the sole member of the LLC who owns the property. If you don't get on board with me, I'm going to put something really ugly back there. I'm going to bring back Kokamose. I am going to scare you so that you do what I want you to do. Well, we're not millionaires in that neighborhood, but most of us have paid over 420 grand for our house, which is not cheap for me. And so they are going to disrupt our entire neighborhood's way of, way of life. And I think that's wrong, you know, for money. And everybody said, oh, well, you can't fight because, you know, you don't have the money. Well, I disagree with that. I like what Council Lady Henley said in the paper the other week. We have to let the citizens know that we care about them. And right now, nobody cares about Long Creek Cove. Mr. Beila is moving. Mr. Beila signed my petition, came across the street to my house, and told me, no, with just one road, I'm against it, and posted it. Now, he's friends with the sole member of the LLC, and he's changed his tune. But it is the wrong thing for our community, plus we would be living with two years of demolition and construction. So what is that going to do to our homes and all the homes on the back of that? They're going to have damage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Could you, could you just show us on the, on the map where you're located?
Okay. This whole neighborhood right here is Long Creek Cove. There are houses here that run all the way back up to right here, their fences right here.
Okay, where are you?
I am on the back side.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Alvin DeJesus.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat, you know, what three of the members have said, but about four years ago, I almost lose my son there. And if we're going to do something like this, which I like it, I would love to have, you know, a light there. I lost a car, that doesn't mean anything to me, but a life is very important. And if we lose a light there, a life there, everybody's going to resent that. So I would love to see they can do a counter, a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jay Leish.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to all, members of the council. As a member of Long Creek Cove, I've been in a collaborative process with Mr. Waitser and my homeowners association. I support Mr. Waitser's latest revision of the 200 units, provided this body commits to the following. One, lowering the speed limit along Great Neck Road from Shore Drive to Adam Killen from 45 to 35. Two, installing a traffic signal, as you've heard from some of my neighbors, and putting a crosswalk from Marina Shores, Long Creek Cove on the east side to the Marina Shore shop side to the west. The installation of the stoplight, crosswalk, and lowering of the speed limit be done before any construction or demolition begins to ensure the safety of the existing residents along the, along with the additional families that ultimately will inhabit the new apartments. Having lived in Long Creek Cove for two years, I have crossed over Great Neck Road multiple times of the day and night in order to reach my business at the other end of Lynn Haven Drive. To compare this challenge with playing the old video game Frogger is a gross understatement. City Council in 2009 and 2010 lowered the speed limit along dense segments of Shore Drive due to several highly-publicized deaths and the ensuing community outcry. This density has spread along Great Neck Road. In previous CIPs, the city has considered placing a light at the Lynn Haven Drive intersection. Today, city engineers argue that the threshold for the traffic signal is not being met. This is the same mindset that produced a grossly inaccurate average daily trip figures for the Marina Shores Drive, which you've heard, referred to by my neighbors again, that most residents of Long Creek Cove dispute. And you also should have a letter from my neighbor, Chip Hires, dated November 19th of this month. City engineers will also tell you that this segment of Great Neck Road compared to other roads around the city is relatively safe, again, using methodology that cannot take all of the following variables into consideration: a neighborhood at the foot of a bridge, a shopping center on the other side of a four-lane divided highway, school bus stops on Great Neck Road at Lynn Haven, potentially two years of heavy equipment traveling down Great Neck Road Bridge at high speeds that would then turn right onto Lynn Haven Drive, not to mention the addition of 200 more families that will need to cross a roadway to eat, shop, and visit the doctor's office. As the attached police reportment reveals, which I've sent to you in an email, there were 85 reported motor vehicle crashes along this stretch of road from 1 January 2014 to October 5th of this year. 15 involved injuries. At Lynn Haven Drive alone, there were 17 reported accidents with two requiring transportation to the hospital. Most remarkable, in less than one month, from 5 September to 30 November of this past, longest corridor, there were six motor vehicle crashes with half of them involving significant injuries. Lowering the speed limit will make it safer not only for drivers coming out of Lynn Haven Drive, and the school children coming on and off the buses. It would make crossing the Cape Henry Trail just down the street safer for all the pedestrians. So as a public safety volunteer for our beloved city for over 25 years, why should I or any of my neighbors have to wait for another traffic study, as Mr. Wood suggested to me in a phone conversation about a month ago?
Shay, thank you very much for running time. Appreciate you coming down.
All righty.
Next speaker, please.
It's all the speakers, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wood. Hello, excuse me. Could I have the representative from the developer? You have three minutes for rebuttal and answer questions, please.
Great. Thank you again for the opportunity. Wanted to address a few of the questions. On the traffic light issue, there's actually a settlement agreement between the city and the property owner, Water Boxes LLC, that says when the traffic light is warranted, the city will put in a traffic light. So we don't really have a dog in that one way or another, because it's an obligation of the city. But as the traffic engineer's report indicates, the traffic will actually be reduced with the proposed development over what's there now versus what could be there in B2 uses versus the approved site plan for 200,000 square feet. So I think traffic engineering's position is the traffic numbers are actually going down, and the light isn't warranted. With regard to the petition, I'll just touch on it. There are lots of signatures from all over the city, a variety of places, and the information was put out there before two critical meetings that we had, September 11th and September 13th. Of all the committees we, communities we've spoken with, lots have said, you know what, we don't want to take a position. You'll see no formal neighborhoods in opposition. And Broad Bay Island has submitted a letter of support from their organization, which is directly across the water, which, which we feel is pretty powerful, given that their, their vote among their members at that meeting was unanimous. So again, development is going, a redevelopment of this property is going to happen. The proposed development with the proffers, with the sidewalk condition, we feel like we've addressed all the safety concerns, and this will really be a high-end development that we feel will be safer. The 30,000 square feet that's there now, that's really underutilized because it's event space, so you're not seeing people coming in and out all the time. The current property owner could take that 30,000 square feet of B2 commercial space, restaurants, office. And so overnight, the traffic numbers could go up without any input, without any public hearings, without any collaborative process with the community. So the current zoning really dictates a much higher traffic count by right than, than what we're proposing, and I think that's why the staff report is reflective of not only the reduction in traffic, but the lack of a need for a light, given that reduction in traffic. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Wood.
For the parcels that are subject to future development, where the pool is and further down on the property, I mentioned in your initial remarks, you said that they could be redeveloped at a future time, if no longer being used as a pool or that space...
There you go.
Right. I'm just figuring, when that property is redeveloped, whatever that might be in the future, you still understand, you still have to meet the parking requirements on that site for what that would generate, correct?
Oh, absolutely. And we've taken that into account. There's actually a proffer that limited, limits further the B4 uses in SD, so we've stripped out all the other uses.
But you would have to meet any additional parking requests.
Exactly. We've had, we've got a current agreement with regard to parking. If we go outside of that, we'd have to reevaluate parking. So you're not going to be able to have sufficient parking.
Just asking this kind of question that comes up. Secondly, if in fact the development of what you might do in the future, however you decide to do the parking, generates traffic, that puts us over, puts us at that threshold, is it your understanding it would be then your responsibility for the light, or is it still the city, even though your rezoning made that possible?
Well, per the settlement agreement, when the light is warranted, the city will put in the light.
I don't know that that's in our best interest, given that that property could generate traffic at redevelopment. We've taken that on. But I know that's prejudicial, but I don't think we bargained... But I know that's prejudicial, but I don't think we bargain very well.
Well, but if you look... if you look at the staff report, the city's taken into account two hundred units, they've taken into account the traffic count from the surf rider that's there now, and they've taken into account the traffic count here.
That's correct.
And the marina boat slips. So there's not likely, given the limitations on parking and the proffered limitations with regard to use, there's not a whole...
Let's walk down that road for a second, now that you brought it up. I wasn't gonna bring it up, but you did. So we take the two hundred apartments, and I think it's 1.7 parking spaces per apartment, but really, there's two cars in reality, that's what happens. So there you got four hundred cars. He just says that ten thousand square feet of a restaurant generates as much traffic as the two hundred apartments. I just heard him say it. So if we said that's true, and that one building's thirty thousand square feet, and it became active as a restaurant, not saying it would, but saying that it did...
You mean the current building that's gonna be torn down?
The current building. Well, that's at some point, right?
No, no, no.
But something can go back on that property, correct?
The surf rider's in thirty thousand square feet.
I'm just... what he just said, I just...
Yeah, no, no, no. The... yeah, what he said was, per the traffic report, about ten thousand square feet of restaurant retail generates the same amount of traffic as two hundred apartment units.
Right, I'm just... I just remember what I heard, so that's what I just asked. Okay, so now, so what's... so that property can be... can be developed as well, correct? Were the restaurants coming down?
We're talking about forty-five...
The thirty thousand, right.
No, no, this is only forty-five hundred square feet. This building right here, this apartment building, replaces the thirty thousand square feet that's there now.
So we're gonna have two restaurant sites, potentially, on the site, potentially?
About forty-five hundred here, and then the existing, and then just the two hundred units.
So that's ten thousand square feet roughly, right?
And the marina wet slips.
So that's roughly ten thousand square feet, correct?
Uh...
Nine... roughly, nine thousand.
The two hundred units is about to... yeah, yeah.
So now, we're saying it generates as much traffic as the apartments for parking? I'm just... I think the parking, and I've expressed this to staff, I'm gonna support this application, I think it's a good application, but I've said this over and again, I've heard... I've seen this shared parking scheme around the city, and it never... I can't see anything where it works. They end up in the side streets, we're here, they can't. They end up in the neighborhoods, they end up... more cars show up, I don't know if they... what happens to them in the night, but more cars in, they're showing, and we end up being short. We see it at medical buildings, so I'm really cautious that the staff's analysis on parking, but then you have to live with the apartment people, so you're bearing the expense of it, so I'm deferring you, but I'm just telling you, you know what parking's like, you're down there. I just caution you that maybe you might have shorted yourself a bit.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wood?
Thanks, I appreciate it. I don't have anything for y'all. Unless you wanna stand up here, it's fine with me. So, and I wanna touch on a couple of things that I've heard here tonight. And these are issues that I've heard from people who've reached out to me, and there's basically just three issues that are... that we're hearing the most of. Traffic and safety, which we heard here tonight. Regardless of your opinion of the traffic studies or anything, people who know what they're doing are at least saying that it's gonna be a neutral change. I mean, they're... you know, they say it's gonna be less. I mean, it's about the same, it's only a couple hundred trips different. And I certainly think that, and I'll talk about how we need to take a look at that, but I think what's more important is the impact of by-right zoning, and Ms. Murphy touched on this, it would be two to three times greater amount of traffic generated by this. I've asked the manager's office, and I'm gonna go ahead and ask this again, because what Mr. Leach said, I think, is very important. We need to take a look at the traffic on Great Neck Road in that area. We also need to take a look at that traffic signal. John, what she was talking about is, there's a settlement agreement from a lawsuit in 1986, and I have a copy of here, that indicates that the city will install this. I'm told that the city, and I don't know if Mr. Stiles, if you've located that information, I forgot to ask you that today, but I believe the city already has possession of the property for that. And I'm also told that there's already been some preliminary utility work there to do that. So I don't want to put in a traffic signal until I'm sure that the speed is correct on Great Neck Road, but I travel that road a couple of times a week, and I can tell you that I think people go faster than forty-five down that hill. So I think we need to take a look at that, and I would not be opposed to taking a look at that speed limit and adding that traffic signal in, at the point where it warns it. Environmentally, we talk... people talk about environmental and flooding issues and things like that. You know, the P1 preservation zoning is something that the surrounding neighbors have been asking for years. There's very little that can be done under this zoning, and then we also have the partnership with Lynn Haven River now, so I think that's a great thing. Ms. Murphy talked about the thirty thousand square feet reduction, reduction of impervious surface, almost three-quarters of an acre of pavement is going away. And anybody who's been to Marina Shores knows that that entire place is asphalt. I mean, there's not a whole lot of green space, and the fact that they're adding in three-quarters of an acre of impervious... pervious surfaces is really good. Also, the current use is industrial. I mean, I don't think we can call it anything other than that. There's forklifts, cranes, fuel docks, boat repair, bulk storage of big boats and trailers and things like that, and significant commercial boat traffic, and all these uses are gonna be gone under this application, which I think is beneficial to the community, and I believe strongly that's why we have a letter from Bay Island. The loss of the dry storage, I've heard that argument a few times, people say, "Well, this is gonna... this is gonna cause me a problem." You know, "My boat's there, you know, I wanna have a place to store..." Well, I get that argument, but there's nothing that requires the owner to maintain a dry storage there. It's ultimately private property with vested rights, and I wanna talk about the by-right uses. Up until 2011, people talked about that, we had Kokomo's there. There were a lot of complaints coming out of Kokomo's, there's a lot of people at Kokomo's, intoxication, drunk driving, all the fun stuff that occurs with that, and there was even an ACLU lawsuit there in 2007. So it was... there was a lot of stuff going on at Kokomo's and places like that, and I think if we have the option to put residential there and not have bars and that sort of thing, I think that's probably a good thing. But the owner's got a Plan B, and it's not a threat. People may perceive it that way, but there's an approved by-right site plan, an approved site plan for two hundred thousand square feet of commercial and restaurant uses, and keeping the existing industrial building. And that would... that wouldn't increase the traffic, that would, you know, two to three times greater traffic, and it would never come before us, because it is by right. So it's something they would just go over to building to and pick up their permit and start building. So, you know, I think that this application is going to be better than what could happen, and I think it's... I think it's an attractive project, and I think it's gonna be good for the neighborhood, so for those reasons, I'd move approval.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I got several seconds. Any discussion, Barbara?
I just have one question. I'm thinking about John's concern about spillover parking... traffic in parking in the neighborhood, if there's not enough parking space. It appears that there's gonna be a six-foot fence in category four landscaping between this and the Long Creek Cove condos. Is that correct, Mr. Wood? I know you've looked at it closely. So you're comfortable that that neighborhood is protected from spillover parking?
Yeah, the other aspect with that, too, is if it was under the by-right, they could actually push the... and I believe the site plan shows that they could push the development right up almost to the fence line, and this, as you look at that, pulls everything significantly far from the homes. So I think it's gonna protect it. I think you could take a look at limiting on-street parking as well, if it becomes a problem, but I don't think that it's gonna be, but I think there's a number of alternatives there.
Okay, and it'll be a great, I'm sure.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question.
Mrs. Kim, may I have your verbal?
Yeah.
I have a vote of ten to zero. You have approved a conditional change of zoning and the conditional use permit.
I'll now move to appointments. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Board of Zoning Appeals, James Oglesby. The Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Board, David France. Casey M. Jones. June Barrett McDaniel. Michael Steer...
Steyer.
Steyer. Reese Smith, Jr., and Dennis Saboda. To the Historic Preservation Commission, Michael Ash. Sharon Felton. Diane Dorst. Lee Lockamy. And C. Mac Rawls. And to the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Carla...
No, 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 no.
No, no.
Community Services Board.
To the Community Service Board, Carla Hesselton.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, please.
I have a vote of ten to zero. You have made the appointments announced by the Vice Mayor.
Before I go for the... well, is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? I hope each and every one of y'all have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and to everyone out here, have a great Thanksgiving.
You bet.
Will adjourn.
Unless you have the ability to cure all your grudges.